Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 5:03 PM. And we need to go into executive session to speak on the phone with the attorney. And so, we're gonna go into executive session right now. And we will return no earlier than, did you say how long? 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Okay. No earlier than 5:15. Okay, and I'll call this meeting back into session at 5:19. Moving on.
Hey guys. Hey, everybody at the back? Hey, Marcy. Can you guys shut the door for me? Thanks a lot. And we'll be quiet.
What do you want through right now?
Huh?
I don't think we can ask.
No, we don't need any room.
Sure.
This is a meeting I just could give people on the other. You're missing.
He said he works in the legal.
Oh. Hey guys. Are they? Shh. Love ya. Love you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on the agenda. Discussion of a plan to replace the director. You all need to form a committee to start that process sooner than later.
Yeah, I have not been in on, I know we had to do something when Craig left, is that correct? I'm sure there must be something similar in the minutes of how that was set up.
And Sean was a part of that committee, so he'll be familiar with what needs to happen. Usually Sean nominates two people to form a subcommittee, so since he's not here, I guess I'll do that. Do any of you guys want to volunteer yourselves to be on that committee with Sean?
I'll work with Sean.
Okay, so Alan and Sean will start, I will email Sean and let him know the process in beginning the review and requests for applications for this position.
Do you want to vote?
I don't. I think two is fine. You guys can decide different, that's just to start it. Get the job description together, get the budget.
So we need a motion to do that?
Not for a subcommittee. You can make one if you want, though.
No.
But I do need a motion regarding the lawyer. Anybody? Anyone? No?
I would, I'd like to make a motion concerning legal issues that the district, the two lawsuits that are pending, that Sean Merrill will act on behalf of the district in those lawsuits. And when needed, that we would, we would have the bill provide, I guess, information as needed. Is that?
You're right. It's been a long day. It's good that it's needed.
In negotiations. Does that, does that make sense?
Or for negotiations. Inner for negotiations. Inner for negotiations. In negotiations.
Yes.
You're absolutely right. I'll second.
Discussion. I think that there'll have to be a subcommittee to also negotiate with Bill on the cost amount for his services, since it will be an hourly rate consultant charge. The attorney approximates it would be no more than 10 to 20 hours a month between January and June. But someone will need to step up and work on working out a contract with Bill before he leaves. And that information will need to come forward at the next regular meeting to vote.
And I'll make good.
So Sean and Kurt will be on the subcommittee's executive court to negotiate a price. And we'll do some research on how much the averages for consultant fees for retainer or hourly fee. Okay? Any more discussion?
Do you want motions for losing?
We've already got the motion. We already have a motion.
Oh, yeah, that is new.
The motion was... Okay, any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Budget?
Before we move on to the budget, I wasn't sure that when Bill resigns, and may I have a second, please? If it's okay with everyone?
Sure.
I just wanna go on like what Bill was saying, that I appreciate your work you've done for the district. I really do. And I know it hasn't been easy for the last year and a half, especially the last year. But if I could give a little confidence, I would give a little confidence, my friend. You did an exceptional job. And I can't imagine what you've had to listen to for the last year. People who tried to justify, I think, some pretty disgusting and disturbing things that are said about you. I, for one, think the board's time should have stood up for you more than we did. But we didn't. And I'm sorry for that. I think that people have got to where they've looked at their own best interest and really didn't put this district before that. I think one person actually referred to you as being evil, yet they continue to let their children work for you. That says a lot to me. They didn't believe it either. I've seen evil Bill, and you're not that. You're a good man, and I wish you well in life. I think you and Kathy are gonna have an amazing time together. Enjoy your paddling, my friend, and I hope our paths cross often.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the budget discussion. Hopefully, everyone had time to review the email. If not, I'll give you some minutes to read over the summary of the eighth pass and the ninth pass. After we discussed the budget the last meeting, Bill announced that he was going to be resigning. And so, that will free us some money in the budget, because it'll take us at minimum of two months to get someone on board to fill his place. Which is where the ninth pass information comes from. Yep. Eighth pass.
The eighth pass was based on some of the stuff we talked about last Thursday, where we, I was directed to continue to get some more out of the payroll budget. Was able to discuss with restructuring, slightly restructuring, building some efficiency into the swim school program. And that's where the $4,050 came from. And then, from speaking with Coach Bill again, he recalculated over the weekend, looking at the specific meets that he's planning to go to, and pulled another $1,000 essentially out of that travel budget. And the telephone expense, I realized, was, had been calculated a little bit high, so we pulled 600 out of that. But that budget ended up with a $5,178 deficit, and I put some suggestions in here for the commission to consider about how to solve that. And then, when I spoke with Lori today, Lori suggested that I put back, just for illustration purposes and to give the commission a chance to decide, I put back the, not only that $4,050 that I had taken out this morning from talking to Erica, but also the $6,000, excuse me, the $9,000 into swim instructor payroll that I took out last week, which I know concerns some people over the issues of safety and having enough instructors in the water. And I also put back the $3,640, this is right at the bottom of your page of your email, also put back the $3,640 that we took out of the janitor payroll. If you remember last week, you were talking about cutting their hours by half an hour per night. So, put those back in. And I took out, this was my suggestion, actually, I guess it's easy for me to say because I'm not gonna be here, and you all will have to decide what you're gonna offer the new director. But I took out the retirement benefit for salaried employees. And I also took out compensation for the director for January and February, which was pretty substantial when you talk about health benefits, salary, vacation, and retirement. So, that brought us, those moves, right at the top of the second page of the cover email there, that brought us to a deficit of $4,156. So, whether you take either one of those budget illustrations, you can decide from a number of choices on where you're gonna come back with that money.
And as you noted on, at the middle of the page here, that the current Southwoodby Parks and Rettig District Director earns more, but the Padocca Pool Director earns less. You guys have the opportunity here, because I've heard several comments the past few weeks regarding his salary and the fact that we could cut back there. We can always cut back $5,000 on the salary you offer to the next director, and then you have a good budget cut.
I didn't put it all up.
And I do wanna say too, with him leaving, I do not think now is the time that we cut back on salary costs for other employees. And I think that Erica's gonna have her work cut out, that's her name, right, sorry, cut out for her in managing all these programs. And I think she's gonna be at minimum 40 hours, if not more. So I think making her salary is a given, so that we can continue to operate here, the level we need to operate while he is, we don't have a director.
So, what we've got then on the ninth pass, we're using that as our looking document, is 48-2, the director's salary cut back to 48-2. And he has not included the $3,600 bucks of the, we were at $3,640 from the janitor payroll.
Right, I added that back in.
That's right.
Those numbers are back in.
It's in here somewhere.
Yes.
And the result was a deficit of $4,156. So if we, if we put the cuts in for the janitors, which was just half an hour a night, so I remember correctly, we would be back, we would get $500.
And you add 14% for payroll tax.
On, 14% on $3,640.
Correct. The $3,640 is the raw number, and then you'd add the 14% on top of that. So you'd be closer than, closer than $500. That was the reason why I made out exactly how we got there, so you all could decide how you...
Yeah, we just have to print the numbers tonight, so I'm sort of past 40 and getting the actual numbers. I think when I'm calculating, it'll be a lot faster when we try to figure it out. $3,640 times 14.
I don't think it's a good idea to even be crunching numbers until we decide what it is you're wanting to do, because I wouldn't be in favor of cutting back the janitor's fees.
$500. Well, it's huge to be... You wouldn't?
No. I don't think it's a good idea at all. I don't think you'd be cutting back staff at all at now. The morale is not in a good place. I don't think that it's a good idea. You're gonna be losing a director. I don't know if you've ever worked in a place where layoffs happen, everyone else has absorbed all the extra work, and I don't think that the staff, the janitors, should be cut back.
The salary is $75,000 higher than the salary here when they worked four years ago.
Well, you can cut back $5,000 to the director's salary, starting right there. The next director, you can offer in $5,000 less, and then you have an even budget.
What is the $3,640, $4,156? I don't know. Is the number 100?
My thought on it is, we can adjust salary, the director's salary, down to balance the budget. We can amend the budget later. We just wanna get this thing so we can submit it to the county, and we can make amendments. And I, I'm certain we're gonna have to make amendments. There's, there's no question that there's some that, some of these line items that are gonna need more money, and some that we're gonna have to take some money away. There's no question about it. As far as salary, I think once we establish salary for some, a position, it's a lot harder to go back than it is just to wait and start it later. That's just my thought. I mean, if I'm gonna start paying somebody a salary, I'm not gonna go partway through the year and then revert, switching it back to an hourly type wage. So, it's easy enough for us to get the director's salary where we balance the budget, and we can amend this. You know, it gives us a little more time to think about some things, and maybe get some more input from the public, start looking at interim director. We've got a lot of work, you know, going forwards.
This, this series of assumptions doesn't recognize an interim director. So that's something to think about. And, you know, if you take these operations to give advice and just tell you what, where I see this proof here, this staff has been a source of pride and fortune to me, just to be able to work with these guys here. Particularly the senior staff that absolutely has the ability to take charge here. If people like Erica and Nicole and Matt and Coach Bill have a point person with the commission that they could work with for two months, I, personally, I would see them having no problem at all just making that happen. If there's some sort of emergency where they need to call in an extra advisor, probably would wanna be whoever you elect as the chair. Nicole, I think would be the right person. But there again, you could save, save a little bit of money instead of having to appoint somebody who needed a, to need an interim. So, that's just my advice, and obviously, you can do what you want.
I get that feeling too, Bill, that these guys could run the place. But we would have to compensate someone to do that. And somebody's gotta be in charge.
Yeah, that's true. There, there needs to be somebody to go to.
What is the youth instructor?
I'm sorry?
What is the youth instructor?
That's the group swim lesson instructor.
Is that the one who we talked about a number of weeks ago, that we had the resolution that we couldn't have a class with one person in it? That that would cut that along?
Well, it wasn't a resolution, but it was, that was one of the assumptions that we'd have to make if we were gonna cut that back. Right.
That's, that's multiple people within that, youth instructor.
But it would mean that if the two people are classed, or if there's one person, what do you do?
Right. And even now, Erica makes a lot of effort. If only one person signs up for a session, she makes a lot of effort to try to get them to move to a different hour, combine them with another instructor. But I would think if we were to make those cuts that we talked about last week, that $9,000 cut, then really that would, that would take that option away, to just let that class run with just one person. And, you know, if you talk to people that have taken classes, taken swim lessons out of other places, it's extremely rare to have a program that allows a class to go with just one. But, you know, we don't wanna lose that person who'll say, go get, you know, say, hey, get shut out of that class, and then they won't come back. So that's a, sort of a business decision, but, you know, I...
On the other hand, we might find it offensive, only at the same level, bring two.
That's right. That's right.
It just seems, that's common practice in colleges, universities, I don't know where else, to do, class is too small, definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Does the ninth pass have a 15% increase or a 10% increase in NWAQ dues?
10.
10?
Yes.
Well, that would be $2,000 more if we go to 15% instead of 10.
Right. That was one of the, one of the options to consider, was taking the NWAQ dues and going to 15, and everybody else at 10, which would give you $2,450, according to this calculation.
I still have a real problem with the janitorial thing, even though Lori doesn't. It's half an hour in length that we're talking about. And the $3,640 that it cuts also cuts $500 from the payroll tax, which is $4,140, which puts us to $16, which means we could play anything anywhere, and it'll be a half hour difference.
The impact, though, is that the guards are gonna be taking up the extra duties that don't get done at night. And so what that does is...
Half an hour?
Well, it's a half an hour to a full-time employee, someone who's actually working that whole half an hour versus the lifeguards wouldn't, it wouldn't take them a half an hour, it would take them just being distracted from their duties, doing other things, where they're supposed to be being a lifeguard for an extended amount of time, as they can, whether it be out of their duty, they do scrub the boards, or scrub the bleachers, I'm not sure what all that entails, but they're not here to be janitors, they're here to be lifeguards.
Excuse me, guys?
And the pay, the pay is different as well.
Could you guys please, we can't hear each other, please? Thank you.
And in light of the recent newspaper article, I have to be honest, I've had a lot of people approach me about the, the fact that the taxpayers are gonna be the one to have to absorb this budget cut with services that, right now, they're entitled to because of the swim team, because we're not willing to take the step and increase the swim team dues. So we're gonna take away from the, the amount of money that the, or the maintenance crew comes and cleans, and then the lifeguards here, out here servicing the rest of the taxpayers.
They are increasing the swim team, increasing them all by 10%.
It says here for 15% increase would make a difference of $2,450.
It has to move them up 15, when everybody else is increasing by 10.
Yeah, but didn't we increase the rental fees by 15 this, or a year ago?
What is the... Swim school was raised 20% a year and a half ago. And I do not know what the rental fee is worth for them.
Right.
Both of them weren't increased.
Not in this pass.
The rental fees and the student are not increasing.
That's correct.
No, because they were already increased by 20%. So what I'm saying is, we shouldn't. We should try and increase where we can, and then we should hold the other fees stable and not increase.
I disagree. When you have overhead, and you increase overhead and you're not helping programs, except administratively, all you do is building in long-term obligations and costs. You know, so you're gonna make the programs more expensive, rather than doing it at delivery level, or if you can put more money in there, I sure agree with you, you know, for better programs. That's why, did you ask? I don't know. I guess we all have different worlds that we come from, but janitorial work is something might be good to have their lifeguards take.
But if it's in the bathroom, I remember there being an issue when I first became a commissioner with gum on the floor in the bathroom. Do you want a lifeguard to go in the bathroom while they're supposed to be guarding and clean the bathrooms?
I think they're not gonna do it when they're guarding outside of the pool.
Let me, let me ask a question. Kurt, how much do we charge up in Bellingham to start? Significantly more than what, what it is here, right?
Yeah, I think it's, depends on your level. I think it's, you know, incremental. I think, and I should know this.
A parrot one clock too, so it's a different thing.
Yeah, it's more, it's a, such a cool thing, so, but it is, it's more expensive. Yeah.
I tell you, I mean, I hear both of you are saying, personally, I don't wanna see people's wages cut, you know? And I personally would want to pay 5%, but then, but then I can afford it. And I feel bad for the people who can't. You know, it's, it's one of those, you know, I mean, it's a tough decision, you know? But I tell you, the common thread, when you talk to people who aren't involved with the swim, swim club in town, they always point to, back to that, you know, your kids are swimming, you know, six days a week, or four, four to six days a week, for this amount of money. And if you talk to people on select soccer, football, whatever other program you talk to them about, you know, I think they're shocked to think that the taxpayers are paying that much towards the program. And, you know, I'm glad they do. You know, NWAQ has changed our lives. Sometimes I think we're all so attached to NWAQ, you know, because our kids have been involved in it, or personally involved in it, and it's kinda hard to see, because you care about those people so much. But I'm telling you, if you talk to people in town that really aren't involved with NWAQ, they think NWAQ should be paying just a little bit more of the share. It's tough, man. It really is. And, you know, I'm inclined, as much as I don't want to, to go towards the 15% rather than cutting salaries of janitors at night. And, and that's tough to say, because, you know, there's people that, that affects their life, and I hate that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm not for cutting janitor's salaries. I'm more for going for the expenses of the program. I think the numbers are way down for NWAQ. I, personally, I, are the reason I'm not with NWAQ, is I don't think the quality's there. And so, for me personally, I'd be reducing that part of it. Not increase, because I think you increase fees or dues, you're gonna, you're gonna, or people are gonna drop out. So that's just...
Yeah.
You can't depend on the revenues. You gotta, we can't...
That's a good point, actually.
The objective thing is the expenses.
That's a good point.
Revenues are, you know, if I increase, yeah, I have current numbers, but then if the numbers go down, there goes, so, that's my, that's been my focus, as I've been thinking about it. And we can always adjust, I mean, even now, we don't have the $26,000 out that we were, $27,000, $26,900 that we wanted out of the total salaries and wages, do we? From a couple...
Uh, no. This, this $4,000, that top line there, it got us a little closer, but...
I think I was down...
Close to 20, maybe.
Right.
Even if we raise the fees 15% on the NWAQ, we still have $16,000.
And do we have year end 2013 yet? I mean, we're through most of November now. We got December left. We're way to, we're pretty close to showing those last few months.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like we're gonna be in the hole for 13.
It will be. It's looking like probably about $50,000.
We're on, we're on... So we just can't keep doing that. I mean, we can, we can bend up to what we have in reserve. After that, we've gotta start looking like bankruptcy or something, you know?
You can't do that.
Yeah, it's just, so, cut, you know, it's like pay now or pay later. That's all it is. And right now, I don't think we can depend on revenues increasing versus looking at what we know is, we have as expensive expenses as planned. And that's, it's gonna be painful. There's no easy way around it. And my thought tonight was, you know, balance it with the director's budget, and let's go make some amendments as we go forward into 2014. We'll be able to see if some things go in then. And we can adjust the director's budget when we negotiate with a new director, find somebody we like. We'll, we'll get them the salary that they need, but then we're gonna have to look at the other programs at that point. The other way just...
Actually, I like that a lot, Kurt.
I just don't know what else to, I hate to picket janitors and things like that.
So, just so I understand, so I can rewrite this.
Okay.
We'll take that, the ninth pass, the way it's written now, with the assumptions behind it, and take 41-56 out of the, just out of that director's salary line item, and it'll balance it.
Just to simplify it.
It will balance at that point.
So we can get something to the county. We'll be in time to get it to the county, and then down the road with our new commissioner, we can, and the end of 2013, we'll really be able to see, you know? And maybe even on the December's meeting, we can have a little more time.
Yeah, you may wanna make an amendment at that point, too.
So you're saying to go with the ninth pass?
With the adjustment out of the director's.
Sorry.
So I'll make a motion to go with the ninth pass budget that Bill Walker's put together with the balancing item being the director's salary reduced to balance.
I second that.
Question?
So that'll put it at 4,400.
$4,156.
Yeah, but no, you say, make the direct, the number beside the director, 4,400.
That's, yeah, to reduce.
And that's the only change I could make to the ninth pass. Well, I'm just trying to, to try to understand what's going on.
Yes, that's, I definitely don't think it's...
It's not gonna stay there.
No, I don't think it's gonna stay there. But I'm just trying to, for the sake of time, for the sake of beating, beating the horse here. here. Trying to get us to where we can submit something the county can give. Otherwise, we can keep asking it out.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
You've got three votes.
So Lori, on that, on that resolution, since you didn't change the revenue numbers, this is the number that has to balance out, and you'd want to write that in, but printed that without, obviously without knowing what the bottom line would be, so let's see where your blank is. You got the blanks, and they're actually...
Yeah, the first blank is here.
Right there, right there, and then down from the next paragraph. So same number in all three of those. And they, we've got to keep an original, and then there's an original that goes to the county, so you're going to do it twice. And do you need to, Kurt, I have, well, I know the answer, Kurt, maybe you know the answer. Does that resolution, the full wording of the resolution actually have to be read in pass? I do not know before it's all signed. You might want to do that, Lori.
Okay. Okay. Okay, in the matter of approving the 2014 budget, this is Resolution 13-04, whereas the 2014 income budget section for $993,740 was submitted to the Board of Commissioners of Northwoodby Park and Rec District at a budget meeting held before the public on November 25, 2013. In said budget calls for $993,740 in operating revenues derived from property tax levy revenue, intergovernmental revenue, fees and charges revenue, and rents and concession revenue. And whereas the 2014 expense budget section for $993,740 was submitted to the Board of Commissioners of the Northwoodby Parks and Recreation District at a budget meeting held before the public on November 21, 2013. And whereas the budget figures are based on an estimate general property tax, GPT, valuation, a revised budget may be resubmitted once the GPT valuation for 2014 is certified. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District of the 2014 budget as stated and shown in Exhibit 1, and underlying budget assumptions attached there too, as Exhibit 2 are approved, dated today, November 25, 2013.
There's another resolution that allows us to get 1% more in tax revenues for next year, so that needs to be signed as well.
Now, do we want to do that, or is that included in?
That's in the budget numbers, yeah, the extra 1%.
I don't know.
Is that not good? Do we do it?
When I was here, we'd be more, I'd do it.
This one has to be written to record as well?
That's the one.
It's the 1%?
I would assume, yeah. I believe you have to, and probably have to vote on it.
Okay, I need a motion if you would like to vote into effect this 1% increase in revenue. Can I have my card? That might help. Need a motion to approve it? In a motion to approve it?
Yeah. Resolution is, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Northwoodby Park and Recreation District has met and considered its budget for the year, for calendar year 2014, and whereas, and I assume this under strike, the district Daniel Lovey amount for the previous year was $576,000, and whereas the population of this district is more than $10,000, and now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the taxing district that an increase in the regular property, property tax levy is hereby authorized for the levy to be collected in 2014. The dollar amount of the increase over the actual levy amount from the previous year should be $5,760, which is a percentage increase of 1% from the previous year. This increase is exclusively of additional revenue resulting from infrastructure, improvements to property, newly constructed wind turbines, and any increase in the value of state assessed property, any annexations that have occurred and refunds made. And that's adopted, assumed we, if we pass it today, the 21st of November, 2015. Okay? Plotted.
21st or 25th?
The 25th?
Should be the 25th. It should be revised.
It's done.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we sign it as is, or do we have to?
Probably want to print your name on there, too. And my understanding is we need three originals instead of just two.
Do you want it printed and signed?
Well, just, just sign it and then print your name next to it.
Okay.
Because it didn't come with a spot for me to type the names in.
I can't read your paper.
Two, three.
Frank, I can ask a question. The budget, the way that you just approved it, has dollars in it for the aquatic director being a salary position.
We have to review that contract.
That's what I was, right, what I was going to say was, that's, the, the actual choice to make that a salary position is a separate issue, and has to be a policy decision that's considered separately, so...
That's exactly.
The money's there in theory, and really the only additional benefit that's plugged in for that position into this budget is a couple thousand dollars in vacation times. There's, there's no medical for her because, you know, again, we're trying to keep this discussion as about the physician and not the individual, but that individual has decided that she didn't want any medical insurance, because she hasn't already, so that part's not there. Just, this budget also took out the retirement package, so that's not, that's not there for her either. So a couple thousand dollars in vacation pay was the only additional benefit for that position, as, as structured right now.
But it just means we have to change the budget before changing the contract.
Right. No, and she doesn't need a contract. That's up to the commission, whether they write a contract or not, so...
Do you have that?
The decision of actually making that job a salary position is, is up to the commission, that could be decided at any, whenever you decide.
Do you have that other one? You do, don't you?
There are only two.
All I have is one.
Yeah, you can do it.
I know. I signed you. Can you guys have your stuff and see if the other one of these?
I'm making a habit of losing these things.
Yeah, there it is.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, you may send that one.
Brother's pencil.
Oh, I got it.
So is that something to discuss later?
Move your turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Here you go.
All right, thank you.